You all in here?
Yep.
The motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
We'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We want to start things a little bit different, start with the pledge allegiance which we haven't done in a long time. We have to process because like the fire is just... My pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And make sure you turn your mic on. God bless America.
God bless.
And just informationally, the fire exit is the door you came through. So we need to rise.
We work for the state.
All right. Obviously, we've got to change our location for the meetings. The reason being that they're being televised for a while anyways. We're not sure how long we're going to have for it, but for the sake of the ease of tele... broadcasting, the meetings will be located here. Do you know if that's going to be every meeting, workshop and the regular sessions?
Not every meeting. It's going to be maybe all silo meetings depending.
Okay.
But none of our red or timber meetings.
The main reason for the televising meetings is, of course, to let the public know it's going on in the silo. We had some people question, ask if we could do it on the television, broadcast for the silo meetings specifically because I wanted to know what was happening, so we'll do that.
She's over there, your secretary?
Yeah, Jim, I'm sorry. This is where is the door angle?
Hi, Jim.
Jim Walsh.
I'm just asking who people were around the table.
And we've also got another new board member who's not here tonight, John Sepinopoulos. He's one of the sons of the four brothers that have the pizzeria locations throughout the tri-state area really, so I'm sure he'll be here for the next meeting. And just as a point of information, if the board members look at the... check your emails, there were applications submitted for the Brookside Restaurant. They're basically looking to demolish that building, the old tickets, demolish the building and put in, I think it was 9,600 square foot of retail space there.
Nice.
So...
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, well, this came out today.
Yeah.
So you've got it on your emails.
Yeah, looks real nice.
And we're going to need to set up escrow for them, obviously, once they get along with that. It's all set? All right. Now, Silo, I'm not sure if you want to start here with us, Mike, but I know we were going to discuss the SPO waivers and so forth tonight, but we're looking at holding up on that now?
Uh, yeah. We... Amanda talked to Julie today and I think after the meeting, if they can get together, we're going to submit some additional information that Julie's looking for and it's in there next week and we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, and just, I guess I'm going to try to help out with some of the new board members. The SPO waivers have been, basically waivers have been granted by the planning board allowing the golf course folks to work on the golf course itself, not on any buildings that are going to be developed or anything but the golf course, you know, the fairways, greens, tee boxes, that kind of thing. They're moving earth essentially, so there's no buildings involved in the process. And we've granted waivers up to this point. They want to do additional work. There were some items submitted for us to look at, but they're not going to be looked at tonight. We thought we were going to look at it, but we're not going to do that. They want additional time to do some more work on it, so take some of the confusion out of the process, make it simpler. And then, we've been... have you seen the site plans for the entire project? Or phase?
Phase one.
Phase one, yeah. And...
There's an amended master plan, the site plan, the subdivision flat, and there's red lines and a half a ton land to plan.
Yeah, Mike, let me go right there so people can hear.
Yeah, we'll have to get used to the process here. We're not used to the finality of the televised broadcast.
Yeah. Because otherwise, people at home, Mike, could hear it.
And maybe introduce yourself as well.
Sure. For the record, Peter Wise from Del Bello, Donellan, Weingarten, Wise &amp; Whittaker in White Plains on behalf of the applicant. Good evening, everybody. As the chairman just mentioned, you have received today a pretty substantial package of materials, a pretty comprehensive submission made by the applicant. Over the last two or so months, the entire project team has worked really hard to really dig deeply into this project and take the concepts that we've presented to you, it's probably, I guess, three or four months now, I guess, or so ago, and really refine them to the point where they really reflect, you know, a product and a project that we think could be very successful in the marketplace. We know, of course, that that's not going to be discussed tonight. What we're here tonight to do, hopefully discuss with you, is process and procedure going forward. And, you know, we're happy to entertain any discussion with you that you'd like to have.
Can you delineate any major changes that have occurred over the last month or so?
Well, hold on a minute. What they're doing right now, they're submitting for the phase one, and what they're going to be doing, what they're doing with that submitted is for us to take a look at what those changes had been. They're going to be showing those in the plans that they've submitted.
All right.
And then, we're going to come up with any questions that we have related to those changes. Consultants are going to look at them and see what they think about the changes. And then, you know, when we get back together on this, there'll be discussions about what the changes were, what the concerns are, if any, and where do we go from here with those changes.
Okay, so I understand there's been a complete demolition of the clubhouse that's gone.
No.
No, it's...
Clubhouse is there.
So this is really just for the golf course, just for the greens and sort of...
No, this is actually for the entire, for the entire phase one of the project, yeah.
Excuse me.
That's part of the plan though, right? To demolish?
Part of what is in the proposal is for the property to be demolished, yes.
Okay. That hasn't occurred yet?
No. The only work that's really occurred has been the fairway, greens and tee, the earth work pushing it.
Well, I see you started digging. And that's good. I like that. So it's all happening now, right?
All right. What are you folks hoping to have occur over the next couple of months?
Mike, why don't you come up here, maybe just share the microphone. It's easier that way.
I'm Mike Dignak with Silo Repentures. So over the next couple of months, hopefully within a month or so, we can get comments back from the consultants. We would also look to have, depending on what the comments are, to have some sort of workshop with them to work through some of the issues, if there are any, in a collaborative fashion. And then we'd have to go back to resubmitting everything based on any adjustments we have to make, resubmit it, and then whatever the processes after that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the question is, would the board want us, assuming that we get comments back from the consultants and we resubmit response to those comments, would we then want to have a large presentation for the benefit of the public? Still not a public hearing, nothing official about it, but a first large presentation. I mean, we gave you four or five months ago, we gave you one of those presentations. And it may make sense to do that again, just to point out to you where we are. It's almost, I wouldn't say starting again, but to show you where we are and what changes we've made over the last couple of months. That may be a good thing to do.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah. Absolutely.
I'm curious, Dr. Clemens, Mary Ann, what do you folks think as far as on time? What do you...
Well, I have to go up there and speak.
Yeah, yeah, no, I...
I need the microphone. They need a microphone.
Do you have a microphone after you're there?
Yeah. We don't have a wireless, huh?
We do have a wireless.
Does it work?
Mike, he's going to give you the wireless.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Let's make it easy so you guys can pass it on.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens.
Excellent.
This is Michael Clemens, is it being picked up?
Don't worry about your...
Yeah?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. One thing I think, I mean, I spoke with Mary Ann today, we've been discussing, you know, how this should go, how we think this should go forward. One of the things, we haven't even had a chance to speak with the other consultants yet. We're going to actually do that tomorrow after this meeting. But initially, one of the things I had hoped was that consultants would meet very soon after getting this, because in the past, when we reviewed out the applications, the engineer, the planner, the ecological person and the visual person sort of got together and figured out the pieces. I think that's what we'd like to sort of, and that worked well, rather than to have everyone go off and do a review and then the pieces aren't knitted together. So this is just my vision, I didn't even share it with George or Julie, is that we would sort of get together, review this, get our comments organized, and then get them back in some, I have ostensibly a written format to the board. Now, I can't speak to the timeline on this because we just got this. I know there's always an interest in having this done rapidly, but I could not commit tonight whether we could do it in a month or not. I just don't know. We have to look at the amount of work, how different it is, what's in... I don't even know what's in here. If a lot of it's the same, in minor edits, at least from my perspective, it may not be that much work, but I can't speak for my colleagues. But we do want to have that ability for the towns consultants to be able to sit down and make sure this is all done and integrated. And then I think, from my perspective, again, meeting again, as long as it's okay with the planning board, meeting again with Silo, their consultants, makes sense, and then come back, as long as that's, everything is okay.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think right.
Yeah, it does make sense.
Well, my main concern is that there's no duplication of effort.
Well, that's precisely why the consultants want to get together, rather than everyone taking packets home and write letters or look at them. We want to sit there, get a meeting, sort of spread her lots, okay, you're going to do this and do that. Some of the stuff, by nature, is integrated. I mean, the engineering, the stormwater, the ecology is integrated, so there are places where there's overlap. But the only way, and we did this before, the first time around, Mary Ann and myself and Mike Sauck, we met at the Carrington, when I worked at Carrington, we spent a day there one day going through and getting all the pieces together. And that's how I think you get to make sure everything's covered and everyone knows what they're doing, rather than pieces being drilled out.
Yeah, we don't want to incur any additional expenses on the applicant.
We're aware of it.
Yeah.
We also want to make sure we have a comprehensive and complete review for the benefit of the planning board and for the applicant.
Yeah, one of the things that was very helpful was the last time Mary Ann gave us written comments, they were in bullet point fashion. It was really easy to go right to her comment, find where it was, rather than have a paragraph that could have been kind of boiled down. Yeah, it was very concise what we were doing there, so.
Well, on the same lines, we'd also talked about somebody trying to pull together... has anybody had the ability to pull together the changes and simply listen?
Well, we're doing a number of things. We're giving to you and to the consultants red lines, documents that show the changes. So the MDP text you're getting, you'll get a red line, you have a red line of that text. The Habitat Management Plan, the same thing. All these, all the documents that are changing, we are trying to give everybody a red line because we think that's very helpful. We're also going to submit the very beginning of next week, we just honestly ran a little behind this week. I'll call it an addendum to the environmental assessment form, which essentially is an executive summary, a summary of the project from A to Z, and has other supplementary materials in it, so that there's one comprehensive resource that everybody can look at and say, here's what the project consists of. So we're trying, we're trying to make it as efficient as possible for everybody, and then we'll take suggestions from the consultants to try and make it more efficient as we go along.
Again, what I would like to see, that we can expedite this project, because this is our eighth year going into this, and I'm getting a little tired. But it would be good if we could expedite things.
Okay. All right, Mike, you have anything else you want to present at this point? Anything else to discuss now?
No, I don't think so. I mean, you know, we, again, we appreciate everybody's efforts. We look forward to working with the consultant team. We'd like to get comments back, obviously, as soon as possible. I mean, every developer would like to get comments back as soon as possible, and we'll just, you know, hope that we can move the process along as quickly as we can.
So Mike, what we're saying is, once you sit down together and then you come up with every conclusion you guys coming up with or questions, do you want to consult with their consultants, or how you want to do that? Have another meeting with their consultants? What's easy for you guys?
I'll speak to myself and then I'll get to the other colleagues here, also have voices.
But would it make it sense then, give us a clean, give us a clean version of it?
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is we need to sit down as a group and give a realistic timeline, when we can get comments. Look at it all and say, okay, can we do it in four weeks? Is it more, is it less? Right, that's the first thing that everybody wants to know, the timeline for the beginning comments. And then I think the next threshold question is dividing up the tasks between the consultants, so we don't have the overlap. So everyone has a piece.
Exactly.
But the pieces also have to knit back together again. So they're obviously, you can't have independent, they have to cross reference. And that's really, so I think the first step is the consultants need to probably take these home, look at them, get together as soon as we can, have that first cut, get back to someone and say, we think we can get this done in X and work from this. Then I think, that's really up to you, whether you want us to come back to you and discuss it, or to them. That's really, after we've got our piece done, I think we're all over with.
We better know each other.
How that goes.
Now, we can see how much they actually go back.
We really, I think, want to keep it a public process for everyone's benefit, but it's up to you, and I'm going to let someone else talk.
Well, the only thing I would say there are, Clemens, is if you folks find things, obviously, that are a simple question to answer, or something that's an easy fix, obviously, if you can throw that out to them and let them fix it without making, you know, without having to go back and four or five times to the planning board and back then and so forth, no problem. But if there's other things that you folks need to come through the planning board, be publicly here and obviously, then you should do that, yeah.
Right, I agree, Norm. There are going to be some issues of clarification, and I think we can go with it then, but I think if there's an issue that you guys need to deal with or care about, those should probably be written form to the board, so that there's a record of, you know, what we're talking about. Shane's shaking his head.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. There's been a lot of modifications from the original standpoint, and some of them I think are good, and some of them I have questions about. But I am in support of what's going on here, and we need this development in town. There's no question. And we're willing to work. I am willing to work with them, so.
Now, would you folks, if I went to that first get-together you guys have, in that discussion?
Actually, quite, I mean, that's typical. Nina, as chair, was often joining us, and prior to that, other chairs normally join us. And Nathan, I think you were at one of those meetings as well.
Yeah, I'd like to attend as well.
So, you know, you just have to be careful not to have too many, right? And you're right, two, I guess, is what you can have.
Two would be the magic, John.
Or it would be fun giving somebody else an opportunity as well.
Yeah, we'll go with it.
You know, it may depend on scheduling conflicts or something along those lines, but I think that's...
Now, who's going to coordinate your meeting as far as pulling together?
I can do that.
You want to just let Larissa know, then I'm keeping that close now? All right?
I want us to do it here at the town. Is there a place here at the town?
You're welcome to, sure.
I think that's the most logical place to do it, in the town. Do somewhere in the town hall, there's a conference room for somebody.
No problem.
Yeah, you probably could use that. During the day, it's going to be empty.
We'll find a spot, no problem.
Yeah.
And just in terms of the visual resources, my expectation is that there'll be a fair amount of back and forth on technical issues, right? Just making certain that they're, that the methods that they're using are the right methods that they're using, and I don't think there's any reason at all to involve the planning board in that, because it's like, what you need is you need visual, you need visuals that are faithful representation of what's actually being proposed, and I think that's when you need to see them, or at least that's my belief, and I think that's generally the best they can forward, and only if there's some sort of impacts or something like that do we...
Yeah.
Yeah, we would certainly agree with that, and I think that's the right way to, right way to go forward.
And I agree with that, too, and I think the other thing is, there may be policy decisions, and that's the other thing, where there are changes and we'd have to come back and say, this has changed, and this is the implications of it, and you have to make the decision as the board. But I mean, for many of the technical things, it's more iterative, but if there's a policy, that's, you set the policy, we don't.
All right, sounds good. So the terms of plan then, as far as how we're going to proceed. Now, something I wanted to bring up, I was talking to Dave before the meeting, and we've got several new members to the board now that have not been part of this process at all, other than what they've seen publicly in the past, but one of the thoughts that I had was to see if maybe we shouldn't try to pull together a meeting, a public presentation if not, of some sort, where we could discuss the project from the day it was started, what it's been through, what was initially proposed, where it's at now, where it needs to go from here, what the process needs to be from here. Both for the board's benefit, those people that haven't been through that part of the process, and also for the public benefit.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
It sounds very similar to what you're proposing.
Yeah, it is. It's exactly, it's exactly what I, that's exactly what I was describing before.
Well, I think the timeframe, you said something like a month or so?
Whatever it is happening.
Yeah. We're ready.
Maybe what I'll do then is I'll try to coordinate between you folks and consultants and Dave and the planning board members to see if we can pull something together.
I like that.
We'll try to shoot for in about a month or so, as soon as we can pull it together, put it that way.
I was just wondering, since we're all here tonight, if Silo wanted to quickly go through what they've given us and, you know, some of the, what they think might be bigger changes since the last time we've looked at it, just as a way to jumpstart our review and what we need to focus on, what's, you know, basically saying.
Want to do that, Mike, with that?
Do you have a, something you can refer to that just highlights all the changes?
Actually, before they do that and while they're sort of organizing themselves, they submitted a revised EAF, and my recollection was that, I think Dr. Clemens had reviewed the last version of the EAF.
And we have.
And you did, okay. Can, do you think that that needs to await your meeting, or do you think you guys could sort of revise that since that's been revised and reviewed three or four times already? Can you do that sooner rather than later? Because I'd like to start the secret process and get the circulation going since that's a 30-day wait period, and I'd like to get it moving along.
I think, I know I can do that sooner rather than later. I mean, there's a memo, it should hopefully be pretty straightforward to go through and say, yes, this has been addressed, or no, it hasn't, just so we can get that out. And I agree with you, I think you should, the board should move that along.
Does this EAF, is this still having the two parcels?
No, Dr., it doesn't anymore.
Okay, sweet, okay. That was the big stick.
No.
Okay.
So the, comes the last time I saw the EAF, so now do you have a view of it?
The EAF, I think.
That came, I looked at it.
You submitted some comments, I submitted some comments, you just need to go through.
And make sure your comments have been addressed, and if they have, you know, is it, is it sufficient to be circulated to the interested involved agencies, basically?
We can do that tomorrow if the...
Do we have an EAF?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, it's in the past.
Yes, you do.
So sometime early next week, you think, is that a possibility, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Because really, basically, we want to see if the comments may be...
Well, that's true, they have the addendum.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, the board did authorize circulation of that subject to have the consultants.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
So whenever there, whenever the consultants' review is completed and it's finalized, we can get it out.
Yeah, and this is just for, again, circulation for lead agency, it's not really substantive thing, so to the extent that we can get that done sooner rather than later, that would be helpful, but it's up to you folks.
With the EAF, I mean, if it's between you and I, we could do it's EAF.
Next year, too?
It's a matter of just checking to see.
One more, yeah.
That should be, that should get back to you.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that.
Just to clarify on the EAF, it is the main parcel, the main parcel, and then there's six acres by lot line adjustment, and then there's 4.9 acres at the south area, south entrance by easement.
Right.
That's the road, right?
Yes, that's the road.
Much clearer in the plans and on the EAF as well.
Than it was, that's correct. Okay, good.
Great.
That wasn't concerning yours at first, I remembered that one meeting.
Would you like us, would you like us to describe the changes?
If you could, yeah.
Sure.
That would be helpful. Well, I doubt.
Amanda DeChesade from VHB. I think the primary change, just as far as the EAF is concerned, is the fact that we are moving forward with payment fee in lieu of workforce housing, so that's why Site B is no longer part... Am I hearing you? Can you hear me, Jim?
Well, I'm good.
Workforce housing, that parcel is no longer in the EAF because the project is not looking to use that, we're doing fee in lieu. Other changes would be the, we lost four residential units because we moved from condo units to townhomes for just three?
Three buildings.
Three buildings. Other minor modifications would be the, basically the grading of the parcels. We did try to work more with the general topography, so you'll see some revisions in the limits of grading, or locations of some of the homes were pulled up or down. But for the most part, what you saw in October is the same plan that we've proposed, it's just further detailed.
Where are the modifications occurring?
Again, the modifications were just the three townhomes that now show up. We lost four residential units.
Okay, is that down or above?
By the village green. Village green. The modifications to the road, you'll see at the estate homes and the south lawn area.
One other thing is there's no height waivers now. In October, we had one, now we're down to zeros.
So the height waiver's gone?
No height waivers required. I really think that's not really...
Yeah.
I mean, we are meeting East of Hudson standards on the entire lot.
The entire, huh?
Yes, yes.
Before that, we're looking to get some help on that.
That's why we lost probably minutes, but we're waiting for that.
We have no carve-out now with that one, the whole watershed.
Yes.
Everything is East of Hudson.
Yes.
You're happy now, Mike, with that?
Well, this was one of the original things, because we're trying to...
It was a commitment we made.
We're trying to basically get this to fit the original findings.
We want to make your life easier with this.
Yeah, that makes it...
And again, just for, and for clarification, the plans clearly delineate the parcel that is part of the lot line adjustment, which is six acres, and the 4.9 acres, which is easement.
Okay.
Those are basically the major differences, you'll see, but the MDP text red line is a good reference to see where the changes are.
Our blockers increased? Interesting. What, what is it? What do you think?
Can I ask one more, can I ask a question?
Sure.
There was a discussion before about someone going through the findings statement and going through and comparing them.
Yes, you will get from us, as quickly as we can finish it, an actual red line of the findings against the 2009 document.
You have an anticipated timeframe?
I would say early next week. It's early next week.
We're going with the addendum.
Yeah, it's early next week.
We've already all done through, we just have to consolidate our comments and make them...
Numbers consistent. Throw out.
So next week, you're hoping to get that to us?
Yes, yes.
Why isn't it working hard?
And so, we really, I mean, it's, it's been a, it's been a real push over the last two months, it really has. This is the last woman standing right here, you know?
I know, I'm talking to people over the last...
Children look at a picture on the wall.
For the last two weeks, talking to people, I can just see that there's a stress in the work.
Almost there.
It's good, it's good.
Anything else, or?
So, that's it, we, uh, we done?
Hey, Tom, I'll get, I'll get you, if you'll hold on just a little bit, all right? All right, um, Vicki, any problem, do you think, if we set up a, um, a public presentation to use the auditorium?
Well, we have one set up, uh, March 24th, for a public presentation.
Okay.
I reserve the auditorium at 7:00.
For a Silo presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
March 24th?
March 24th?
Unless, unless you're talking about another presentation.
Well, I'll have to find out from you what you're talking about, yes.
24th, 26th, 25th?
I don't know.
It's a Monday. St. Patty's Day is a Monday.
7:00?
Well, all right, well, my answer's my question anyway, so I guess if we're okay with having a presentation in the auditorium, then. Um, yeah, well, let me ask you this, if we need to change the data, is there a problem with that?
Sure.
That's okay, yeah. Because I want, I want to make sure we can get the consultants and everybody else we need there for that.
24th is a Monday?
Uh, yeah.
Well, I, I believe, um, I was called to set up a presentation of Silo is to explain, you know, the whole program. Um, I don't, you know, it sounds like you're, you're also want to do some, uh, presentation, too. I mean, I don't see any reason why we couldn't combine them, or else we could have them separately.
Makes sense to combine them.
It, you know, whatever works out. I mean, the, the auditorium is available for, you know, anytime you want to do any kind of presentation.
Well, so if you've got that...
Just need to, you know, let me know.
I, I don't, I mean, I think we're all talking about the same thing.
Pretty much.
It's really where we were and where we are today.
Yeah, because I, I believe that's, that's what, you know, that's what they were asking me to, you know, for a date to... So, that, that was the tentative date, and that's kind of what we're working for. And, um, Mike will be filming it, so it can go out to the public.
Yeah, and I also want to get into where we're going to be going from here, the process, and again, for the new members to kind of help everybody pick up on what's going to be going on, what needs to be done, so.
So, you know, if you need another date in addition to that, just let me know, and we'll work it out.
Okay, all right. So, I guess we'll try to shoot to the 24th. If people want to look at their calendars, to see if that's a possibility, I guess, we can go with that, and then if it doesn't work, we'll have to get a change. See, Mary Ann, that going to work?
It's not good for me either. No, I have two days aside.
Okay. I'll be in touch with folks, I'll see what we can do. Anything else, Mike? I think that's all I have. No, we have the coffee house, um...
That could be off.
Okay. But that's pretty much it, okay? I guess, uh, the motion to close, or hold, Tom, you want to ask something?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you go on up there?
Oh, give him the mic, just pass the mic there.
My mouth's so big, I didn't think it would ever... And then, like, uh, Mike was there, and, uh, you know, the, uh, Pedro, he was present at the meeting, and he gave me a, a drawing, his palette, or off the back of the line, this, what he proposed.
It was very good, but you won't, very, very well.
You remember the, the one?
Yeah, yeah, no, it hasn't changed much from that in a month or so, but it changed, basically, there was some hardwoods, I was always bringing, and then we turned those into townhomes, and that's all, I didn't know, it's moved along a bit.
Well, I just want to make sure you didn't just turn the sheet over and start the press.
It's not like a consultant, now, huh?
It, uh, you know, all of this came into effect, and the dams that were destroyed during the regulation.
All of the, uh, yeah, I don't...
What's the question?
He's talking about there's dams in the wetland during the reclamation, reclamation of the landfill. I guess there was some dams that were taken, not on my property, but, to lower the level of the wetland, and at times, it's, it was restoring those dams and water in the...
Boy.
Wetland comes back up.
We're not going to be messing with the wetlands, Tom, I don't think, no. I mean, that's just not something that, um...
You just took off.
Killed you.
If, if anything, they're going to be stopped from affecting the wetlands, they're going to, nobody's going to let them do anything to the wetlands. Unfortunately, that's just... Yeah, I don't, yeah, yeah, but, uh...